Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Seated this evening would be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Lynn Conway. Our alternates, who will be rotating in and out later on for various different reasons, are Gary Belkey and Andy Meek. I think our first item on the agenda will be the minutes. We have two-minute reports to approve.
Make a motion to approve which minutes or which day?
We'll do number 1700, July 22nd.
Make a motion to approve the July 22nd minutes as written.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman, that is July 26th.
July 26th. Excuse me. Thank you.
That's okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now the 1701, August 2nd.
Make a motion to approve the August 2nd minutes as written.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You will abstain.
You will abstain. Thank you for it. That's correct. I guess we're moving right on to Keith.
Sure. Before starting anything, I just want to point out for everyone here that if anyone's here for the public hearing, item 7B on the agenda, that's the Mary Hall Road, Greenhaven Road development by EG Home, that won't be taking place tonight. They've asked that that hearing be opened and immediately continued to the September 20th meeting at this location. What's that?
Thank you.
Oh.
Keith, what was the reason for that?
Just to further modify the plans and react to comments from our department and from the town engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
So item 5B are the administrative review items. 5B1 is 22-187 CONMSTEM and D Levy, zoning permit application for the removal of invasive brush in a downed tree in a non-infringement area. Property located at 112 Mistuxid Ave Mystic, Assessor's map 162 Block 4 Lot 1 Zone RC 120. So zoning permit application. It's for the removal of invasive brush in a downed tree in a non-infringement area on a residential property. The removal's already occurred. The proposal's located in the RC 120 zones, non-infringement area. And in that zone, it's defined as an area where within 100 feet of watercourses or wetlands. You can't disturb, fill, or improve any of the vegetation there. But with the commission's permission, you can use it for public trails, greenways, boat access, and water quality restoration activities. Removal of invasive species is commonly approved by this board as a water quality restoration activity due to the environmental benefits. A recommended stipulation from the zoning official and wetland official is just that the recently cleared area adjacent to the cove shall be planted with upland plantings rather than grass. There's a letter from the applicant in the report and different photos, including a before-and-after photo there.
Has grass already been planted, do you know?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on this situation?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. Thank you for that.
With the stipulation?
With the stipulation from Keith.
Yes.
Of not planning, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll try to speak more clearly into the microphones.
That'll be great.
Okay. Thank you.
For the two old business items, the two bond releases, just recommend tabling until the next meeting. Which just leads to the public hearings.
All right. We will be continuing the Town of Stonington's zoning regulation amendment. I suppose with a record, Lynn, you should read it right from the top?
Yeah.
Please.
And would you like me just to open the EG Home LLC? Just to have it opened and closed, or is it already documented?
Yeah, that's a good idea before we forget.
Okay. I'll do that first.
Excuse me? Yes, Ben?
I'd just like to suggest that if the applicant isn't ready, hurry it over.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Into the microphone, yeah. Keith, do you have more information on that?
Well, it's just, you know, their right to do that. Well, I mean, ultimately, if they run out of time and they're not ready, then they run out of time and it won't be approved. Oh, the Mary Hall Road.
The question was why are we going to open it to immediately postpone it? I think we're ready to move along. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay. Pursuant to the general statutes of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawcatuck, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. PZ 2217SD and SUP, Charenzia Escavation, Inc., and EG Home LLC. Subdivision and special use permit applications for modification of an approved re-subdivision plan consisting of 42 single-family homes within a common interest community on a single reconfigured lot. Property located on Mary Hall and Greenhaven Roads, Pawcatuck, Assessor's map 7, Block 1, Lots 44 and 44F through 44L, Zone RM 20. This is to be opened, and it is now going to be immediately continued to the next, or until September 20th.
September 20th.
Thank you, Lynn.
The next application. PZ 2221RA, Town of Stonington, PZC, zoning regulation amendment application to create regulations for cannabis establishments in the community. This is continued from the 8/22 meeting.
Thank you, Lynn. Procedure, as always, will be, there's a sign-up sheet on the desk by the, I'll call it the front door, the front entryway. The applicant, this being Keith, and the town will have their first chance to present new information that we have from the last, that we did not have on the last meeting, hence why we are here tonight. The public will then have some time to have input, in favor, against, general comments, rebuttal by the town in this case, staff input, board questions. And then we will close the meeting and hopefully vote on it this evening. Can you hear me all right out there?
That's much better, actually. I can.
Waving? You're welcome to sit up closer if you'd like. Okay. Keith?
Well, as you said, this hearing was initially open and discussed at the last meeting. There were very, there were a lot of helpful comments from the commission and the public that went into the new modifications of the proposed regulation.
Excuse me, Keith? Fred pointed out something. I'm embarrassed to say I never said who is seated.
Okay.
So, one moment, please. Seated for this meeting will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick. Fred Dykman was not here last meeting, so he will recuse himself, not be involved. Lynn Conway, you were here, so you will be seated. And I thought I'd have Andy Meek, you were here at that last meeting. You'll be sitting on this decision. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Okay, Keith. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no problem. So, starting from the beginning, some of the definitions are more clarified than they were last time. Getting rid of the term "person" for these businesses and specifying that the department means the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection. One change that was talked about was not just allowing a cannabis retailer, but allowing a cannabis retailer or a cannabis hybrid retailer. So the limitation is still going to be just one of these things, but it's going to be one cannabis retailer or cannabis hybrid retailer. And a hybrid retailer is basically a retailer that can also do medical marijuana.
But that would be, excuse me, Keith, that would be first come, first served, whoever.
Right. Yeah. And that change is reflected in the individual zones and in the use chart.
But I do want to point out, this is not what the town voted on. That is correct.
The town didn't vote on specifics. The language the town voted on was just the question, "Shall the Town of Stonington adopt an ordinance prohibiting the establishment of a cannabis establishment within the town limits?" So the specifics weren't in that. The state law at the time was just that a town of our size could have one retailer and one micro-cultivator. So this zoning regulation does still stick with that, even though it's not state law anymore. We talked about the distance requirements before. The way it's worded in here is that there's a minimum distance requirement of 100 feet from any residential use or place of worship. Didn't seem like there was a real consensus on changing things last time. So it's still listed as 100, although that was a point of interest last time.
Keith, just out of curiosity, were you able to find anything about similar distances for liquor stores?
Can you?
I think we were looking at.
Ryan?
The state.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
The state does not have a specific distance requirement from liquor stores to churches or places of worship. They said in their response that it could be a factor in approving a liquor permit or denying a liquor permit in general, but there's not a specific distance requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
And do our regulations have a distance requirement?
No, we don't. There's an updated section here about the odor control plans for cannabis micro-cultivators. The language is more specific. It still requires an outside review by an expert. More detail about the building being designed and equipped so that odors can't be detectable from the property line. It also mentions that it should be continuously implemented by the applicant once it gets going, which is something we talked about here. Specifies that cannabis hybrid retailers, yeah, just includes them in the hours of operation. For the traffic and parking management specifies that a traffic impact study is required. For the Maritime Heritage District, where Mystic Seaport is, it specifically says now that cannabis establishments shall not be permitted in that district. Also specifies that in the NDD Neighborhood Development District, that it's only cannabis, cannabis establishments can only be allowed there when the previous zone is HI 60 or TC 80. And it can only be the types of cannabis establishments that are allowed in those districts. The idea being they're allowed in the TC 80 and HI 60 anyway, so people don't get penalized by using the NDD in those zones only. Now, and one of the things we talked about was the distance requirement. One of the things I tried to do was spell that out a bit. So in the report on page 32, there's a map there of residential uses in and adjacent to the HI 60 zone. And the point of this is just to show that if those distance requirements get too big, potential businesses will be bumping into residential uses nearby. So that 100-foot minimum distance requirement could be increased somewhat. Yeah, maybe 200, 250 or so. But once you start getting above that, it becomes difficult to cite things in that zone. And I focused on the HI 60 because it's, between this and the TC 80, this is the zone where there's a lot more developable land. TC 80's possible, but it might be harder to cite something.
But it can happen.
It could, yeah. There's also a map in here of an existing church in the HI 60 zone on Liberty Street, and 1,000-foot radius from that, because 1,000 feet was sort of mentioned at some level as a possibility. And this map shows that 1,000 feet from that church does sort of take a lot of areas off the table in that zone. If you're interested in some real deep dives, you know, I included a link to some existing odor studies by the applicant and by the outside expert for other towns, which are very detailed and sort of brings home the point that you really do need the outside expert to review these things. And we didn't receive any other comments from other outside agencies or anything like that in this time.
Okay. Is anybody from the public would like to have an input on this? Any comments? Sure.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donnarumma. I live in Pawcatuck. While I agree with most of Keith's green highlighted additions to the proposed cannabis regulations, I still have some reservations or am concerns about three things. One, the addition of the words, quote, "cannabis hybrid retailer," end quote, which appears in several sections. While I agree that a medical dispensary is a good idea, it is not what was voted on by the townspeople. I am sure, I do not have to remind you, that we voted, what we voted on was one cannabis retailer and one microbrewer, which was what the state offered at the time that we voted. And I believe that was confirmed by Mr. Bryant's just recently. Also, I believe a cannabis hybrid realtor is not what Mrs. Mayhar was describing, where she is the pharmacist in charge in Groton, where she works. She did not mention any regular sales of cannabis to anyone, only those which had a medical, only those which are medically ordered by a doctor. Perhaps at some future date, a medical dispensary could be added to our regulations. If I had to state why people in our town voted the way they did, it was for two reasons. One, the money that would come to our town from the fees. And two, they wanted to buy cannabis for recreational use. And if you remember, it was a very unusual statement that we voted on. It was, if you were in agreement, it was the opposite. Yes or no? It was the opposite of what was stated. It was very confusing. But anyway, again, I think a medical dispensary could be added to the regulations later. I strongly suggest that all references to a cannabis hybrid retailer be eliminated from the proposed regulations under consideration tonight. Number two. Why is that? If I, if you agree that this is the time that a hybrid retailer should be eliminated, then Section 6.6.27.4.2 should be eliminated from the regulations. And three, personally, I never liked the NDD regulations and feel that they should have been stricken from our regulations. If these regulations are staying, I wonder how likely it is that a parcel in HI 60 zone of the TC 80 zone would be rezoned to NDD. Would the ultimate goal of these regulations stated in 7.21.1.1 as requiring, quote, "assurances for the town and its residents that its existence and future plans will enhance and not disturb the surrounding residential neighborhood"? Would that be accomplished? In addition, I find 7.21.6.4.7 very confusing, especially the phrase that reads, and I'm going to read it to you, "which may be permitted, the specific types of cannabis establishments that are allowed to have in those districts," end quote. That phrase doesn't sound grammatically correct to me. I think you should correct it. Well, those are my comments after my lengthy comments the first time around. Thank you for considering them.
Thank you.
Before you go, could I, could I ask you to elaborate on how you perceive the difference between a hybrid retailer and just a purely recreational retailer?
Okay. I believe if you look at the definition, the hybrid person or business or establishment would be dispensing not only medically documented cannabis for the person, but also to any Joe Blow who walks into the institution. And that is not what is in Groton.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just curious, you were saying it's not what we voted on.
Right.
I'm just not sure how adding, I'm just trying to follow how adding the medical dispensary to the same facility that is already there to sell recreationally. What we had originally at the last meeting was all of these proposals to allow a dispensary. And now we're talking about changing that to allow a dispensary or a hybrid dispensary.
That's if you decide to vote that way. Right.
Right.
Right. I disagree.
Okay.
I think we should just have the retail, which was, I think, most people voted on it for. They, I don't think they even heard the word "medical dispensary" before now. And by the amount of people who are here, the number of people, I should say, who are here, I guess people just don't care or aren't interested in what's going on. I don't know. It's up to you to decide for the town. And I'm just giving you some points that I think you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen. Thank you.
No, that was it. Thank you.
Mr. Tamski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick points.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. I'll wait for Carleen. Don't want you to leave, Carleen.
Just a couple of quick points. One is the reference to hours of operation. I'm just wondering, I don't, as far as I'm, as far as I know, that's not something that exists anywhere else in our regulations for any other use. Liquor stores are regulated, the hours are regulated by the state, I believe, not by zoning regulation. So I don't see the need for that in the regulation. I think it, whatever, whatever restrictions the state puts on it as far as hours of operation should be, should be adequate, I would think. I think you might be starting a precedent by putting hours of operation into a use in your regulations. Second of all, with regard to the distance requirements, I understand the idea of keeping uses separate. With regard to the residential uses, I just think you should be careful that you don't make them too onerous. Otherwise, I think this is all going to become an academic experience, and there won't be anywhere that more of these facilities can be built because it's going to be, it just won't exist on the map. And with regard to Carleen's comment about the hybrid facility, I understand what she's saying, but I think that the hybrid is actually less intensive or less, should be less troublesome as far as most people would be concerned, I think, because there's a, there's a higher level of regulation and scrutiny on the medical side, the dispensary sides. And if you're only adding that to an already approved recreational dispensary, I don't see the problem with that. Other than that, just thanks for doing great work on this. I think everybody contributed a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Any other comments from the public? Keith, do you have a rebuttal?
As I said, you know, the town vote was, was general about whether to prohibit cannabis establishments in the town. I don't think having the hybrid as an option, as a type of retail, goes beyond that because there's still just going to be a maximum of one, either retailer or a hybrid. And the hybrid just adds the possibility of selling medical also. As Mr. Tamski pointed out, there is that extra oversight as the, as the speaker at the last meeting said. The NDD reg here, it, the wording is confusing until you look at the section on top, which says prohibited uses shall include. And then when you read that, it makes grammatical sense. And the cannabis statute does specifically say that towns can limit the hours of these cannabis establishments. So it is a little bit more authority than you, than you normally have with uses in town.
Whereas we cannot regulate liquor store hours, correct?
Yeah, that is.
A state.
That is a state thing.
So the state's allowing the town to set its own regulations of hours?
Keith, does the state have any recommendations for hours on their own for cannabis establishments?
No, no. They don't have any. The hours in the proposed regulation here for cannabis are the same as the ones for liquor stores.
Okay. Thank you. Keith, would there be any, you know, I,
Keith, would there be any, you know, I, I sort of liked what was said about, you know, not stipulating hours in a regulation, but there'd be nothing that would prevent us from stipulating hours of operation in a permit, correct? And I mean, and that, that could, that could vary based on the location that's proposed.
Right.
And you might want that flexibility based on, on the location. And that's what I'm thinking of with the comment that, that was raised, that, that we might want to leave some flexibility in this depending on the actual location that, that is proposed. So if, if we could stipulate in a permit hours of operation because the statute gives us that authority, we would want to stipulate in the permit the hours of operation.
Rather than these regs.
Rather than adopt a rigid criteria that would allow them to operate in that bandwidth, you know, that maybe isn't ideal based on the specific application that comes in.
Other board members, what do you guys think?
I think Chuck's got a good point.
Yeah, agreed.
So would we write that into this regulation so that it's very clear to future boards that the hours of operat- operation
To be determined.
will be part of the permitting process and should be covered.
I like that.
And should be covered as part of.
Should be stipulated in the permit.
Yeah.
By the board.
Yeah.
I like that.
Andy, you on board? Like that?
I'm on board.
Yes, I'm on board.
So I, I have a number of questions. You know, I did, did a little homework over the last couple of weeks. And I, Keith, my understanding is that in New York State, the state has said very clearly that if a town votes to go forward with saying you can have an establishment, that one, 10, 20, whatever it is, they cannot then, five years from now, say, change that vote and say, no, we no longer want to have these type of establishments. And that's by state law. Is that your understanding for Connecticut? Has there been anything like that stated?
No, I mean, the town did away with the limitation on towns based on population. So.
But, but did, but it specifically stated that if, oh, I make, make myself very clear, that if the town has voted to say, we will allow retailers, cultivators, whatever it is they voted for, and they said yes, all right, with or without a number, yes, they cannot go back five years later and say, we want to change this now to no based on whatever happens in the town. Maybe they have a bad experience, I don't, I have no idea. But is that part of the Connecticut law?
No, I don't think there's anything like that in the Connecticut law.
Okay, because it's specific, specifically.
It'd be up to the town to have, it'd be up to the board to allow another one.
Right, but in New York, that's not the way it is, so I want to be sure I understood. Okay, the second question I have has to do with the NDD zone. So I'm kind of getting to the public comment about the fact that the NDD zones say that we, we, the town has to ensure that there would be no disturbance and in fact, an enhancement to the neighborhood. Now, given the changes in the state statutes where we no longer are allowed to say for any kind of a permit, permit or application that it has to be in keeping with the neighborhood, that language is no longer allowed, how is that handled for the NDD? So in other words, is that going to go away because the state has said it has to go away? Or no, because that is a specific zone and we have specific language that it would, it would stay that way and that would therefore be a consideration if a permit was required for that? Yep.
You know, the floating zones like the NDD are, are a different animal where the commission has a lot more discretion because the people are coming to you asking for a zone change. And it's sort of like when someone comes to you asking for, let's say, a regulation amendment. I want to allow dog daycares in this zone. The commission's at its maximum level of discretion to say, no, we don't think that's a good idea. No, thank you. And that's sort of the same thing with, with the, the floating zones like the NDD, where if you think something doesn't live up to its statement of purpose there, which includes a language of, you know, making the neighborhood in the area better, then you're definitely within your rights to say no.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that being.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up question to Lynn's? Just, I'm curious though, because that whole, with the state saying you can't have, does that put us in conflict with the state law at all? I'm just curious.
No, because the state, the change to the state law was just about using the vague term "character", "character of the neighborhood" to deny things.
Okay.
Especially housing applications. You know, and that would often be the case where, you know, neighbors would protest housing developments and the commission would say, we don't think it meets the character of the neighborhood with nothing to really back it up in the zoning regulations. So that's the type of thing that's now spelled out in state law that you can't do. You can't just rely on that vague notion of community character.
Okay, so are NDD being more specifically defined for companies?
Yeah, yeah, and because it's an actual zone change.
Okay.
It's more than just a regular old development application.
Okay, thank you.
So then, my next question has to do with some of the definitions. And I'm looking specifically at 5.2.2 and the table that you put together, which, I'm sorry, the public may not have access to this at the moment. So we've got various uses listed. And there's more than two types of uses. And I, I just, again, I want the regulations to be very clear later on for future boards. A cannabis micro cultivator, you could have one or you could have two. And that would be it for the whole town. Is that correct?
Um, just, just one in the whole town.
Just one. You could have a cannabis micro cultivator and a cannabis product manufacturer, one and one, and then no retailer? Or like, is there, you can have one of these three and one of these three, but you can't have a combo with these definitions? I don't think it's clear, is my, my point.
I mean, you could have a combo as long as the thing is allowed in that zone. The only real limit is.
So you're saying you could have a cannabis micro cultivator, a cannabis product manufacturer, and cannabis product packager, and, and cannabis food and beverage manufacturer, that, that would count as one if it was all in the same facility? And then you, if you had another facility, you could have the cannabis retailer and if we go forward with retailer and hybrid retailer? Is that, is that, it's the way the table is written. I'm just not sure if it's clearly, that we have clarity as to the column of use is different because you've got a number of columns of use versus one retailer, one cultivator? Because it seems to me like you've got a lot of things written here. You've got like eight. So I don't know if for clarity's sake, blocking them off, or in some, in the definition, you want to say a cultivator is one, but not more than one of the following? And a retailer is one, but not more than one of the following, right?
Stipulate that you can't combine the uses on a site, correct?
Yeah.
That'd be another way to do it.
Right, that's, that's another way to do it, but this table doesn't work.
Maybe just an asterisk, say stipulate that you can't combine uses on a single site.
Is that true?
Is there, is there, in general, is there an issue with combining some of these uses? Like if there's a micro cultivator that also does packaging or manufacturing, is that something we wouldn't want?
I mean, I could see, some of it makes sense that you would have some of those, you know, micro cultivator would also probably have a packaging operation. I guess, but to your point, I guess we need some clarity on this table, like linking them.
Yeah, I don't know, and I, I think it's unfortunate that the vote, the way the vote was stated was very ambiguous at best.
Extremely.
Somebody needs a lesson in English. But it's, it's certainly, we are not doing ourselves any favors by having a regulation that's this confusing. So I, I just think we need to hone in on what we think needs to be done here and the language.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. That's, that's exactly the kind of question that's going to come up to the zoning.
Yeah, 10 years from now, it'll come up.
The zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
You know, somebody's going to, that's the, the first thing that's going to come out of the gate is something exactly like that. So I think stipulating it in the regulation is a good, is a good idea.
Well, it is listed in section 6627.5 of the regulation. That's where it says the commission may only approve a maximum of either one cannabis retailer slash hybrid retailer and one cannabis micro cultivator in the town. The use chart is just a summary of where things are allowed. So there are dozens and dozens of rules that are not mentioned in the use chart because it's just a summary. The definition, ideally, the definitions are definitions and don't contain actual rules because that adds to its own confusion when there are rules sort of hidden in the, in the definitions of zoning.
Okay, so.
So in my opinion, the use chart doesn't have to spell out that limitation. That's a rule that's just mentioned elsewhere. And down the road, let's say we say, hey, these cannabis retailers are a good thing. We could change that rule, allow more, but I don't, I don't think it needs to be mentioned in the use chart.
Well, then the use chart has this cannabis delivery service and/or transporter. And the zones that that's allowed for do not match one-on-one the zones for any of the others. So is it incorporated? Was that just an error? So you've got this, the GC-60 zone allowing the cannabis delivery service and/or transporter. That is not allowed. No other definition of activity is allowed in the GC-60 zone. So then would that say, okay, if I have a cannabis delivery service and/or transporter, I put it in the GC-60, what box does that check? The retailer or the cultivator?
None. There's no, the only ones that are limited to only one in town are the retailer slash hybrid retailer or micro cultivator. So in theory, you could have five cannabis product packagers in town.
Okay, did anybody else get that from reading this?
No.
No.
Okay, so we have a problem, right? Yeah.
So it seems like there's been this expectation kind of implicitly set in the discussions that what we're discussing is allowing one retailer and one micro cultivator. Could we perhaps amend the language to say something like, we will allow, because the people voted on a dispensary. They said, we shall not stand in the way of that, basically, with the language used. So that was kind of given the go-ahead by that referendum. Could we say that we will allow one retailer and then one period of any of the other uses? So say the first person to come is a delivery service, then we don't have a cultivator. That would fill that second slot.
That's, that's what I think actually the town voted on, and I agree with you. I just don't think it's clear.
No, no, I see what you're saying, and, and right now it's not clear. But I think that if we were to say that we were allowing one retailer, one, you know, and then all of the other uses get kind of lumped together.
Yeah, as one.
As one, which there can be one of.
Right.
That's what called.
Which is different from what Keith just said, because he's.
Right, right.
But if people did read the state law back then, they would have seen that the limit was for one retailer and one micro cultivator without limits on the other ones.
That was the state statute at that time.
The state statute at that time.
Which was not referenced in our referendum.
Yeah.
No.
Who put that together?
So I think that, assuming that people out there thought that we were only going to allow one establishment is sort of overreaching what people were thinking.
Well, the, the press was lumping in the state statute with our vote and not necessarily that was the case.
So I, I, I really like Andy's proposal.
Yeah.
As a start, right? And then if we have misinterpreted what the town thought, I'm sure we'll hear about it and we can go back and amend it and expand. I don't think we should assume that everyone read the state statute verbatim and interpreted the way some people have. So I think, I'd like to propose that we, we do exactly what Andy has stated, but we stated very clearly in here, because I, I just don't think it's there.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and there's another thing.
I, I agree completely with mine.
Yeah.
And with Andy. I think, I think he.
Yeah.
The, the way you stipulated it was very clear.
Okay.
And somehow that should be memorialized.
So if you could repeat it, Andy, that'd be great.
There are, another thing is these, these uses are different license types that are in the state statute. I'm not expert enough to know if a micro cultivator will typically also get a manufacturer's license and a packager license and a delivery license. So if we're sort of, if we're just limiting it to one of those period, then, you know, we might not get the typical micro cultivator if they typically do those other things too.
So maybe this is, I, I know we're under a little bit of a time, time. Again, I think we go conservative because we can always expand. And if even a month from now, we do a little bit of homework, you know, I think, and come back and, and amend, I think that would be better than, A, having a gap, right, in our timelines? And B, being wrong. So.
Or opening the door wider than, than I think. You know, some people may have interpreted when they voted in the referendum.
Right, exactly.
You know, I, at least, at least one person that pays close attention to things here in town thinks that, that the referendum, you know, was very clear and stated, you know, was limited. And, you know, there's nothing from stopping us from expanding this if everything works out and there's a basis for expanding it. I do agree strongly with you, Lynn, that, that Andy's stipulation is a good starting point. And, and it doesn't, doesn't prohibit us from expanding it later on.
All right, if every micro cultivator that comes to us says, I've got these other licenses, this town is not suitable, then we'll get the drift.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it makes sense to proceed with Andy's recommendation.
Great. So then, my, my other comment is really about the 100-foot versus the 1,000-foot. And I, I don't know what's right. But what I heard in the last meeting about the lines, right, wrapping around buildings four times, et cetera, I did go out and talk to people. And that is truly a fact in some towns. And the time that it changed is when multiple retailers started getting permits for the town. So, again, I, I mean, 1,000 feet seems, it's bigger than a football field, right? So that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's 300.
But on the other hand, right, but on the other hand, you know, 100 feet, if the line is.
I was thinking 250 feet. Good catch.
Yeah, and then do you put something along with the parking? So is it 250 feet and they're on the sidewalk? Is it 250 feet and they're on somebody's grass? Is it 250 feet and everybody's, you know, trying to come up with where they're parking their car while they're waiting? Because, you know, I don't know. And I know the traffic study is part of that.
I think that'll be handled in the special use permit, you know, where do you plan on having the waiting lines?
Yes, it's that traffic and parking management plan.
So then, it's going to be...
Foot, foot traffic managing.
What are, what, so then, the traffic plan is gonna have to say, "Well, based on, I don't know, um, Stockbridge, Massachusetts,"
Right.
"Right, they, in this retailer, they have, you know, twenty people every, every hour." I, I have no idea. But you would have to know that Stockbridge, Mass, Massachusetts, just as a made-up example, I have no idea, has ten retailers.
Well, in five years, we might.
Right, and we could. But I, I'm a little worried about that. I'm a little worried, is the traffic, um, that we're going to require, they get an independent traffic study, but is there something else we need to say, um, from a, from a town that has the same regulations or only has one and one? And then, again, if we up it and all of a sudden we have five, we can up that section as well of, um, the regulation?
Well, why not stipulate having a foot traffic study? I mean, we have a traffic study, why not have...
You know, the regulation asks for a traffic and parking management plan. One of the things it talks about is addressing, um, outdoor pedestrian queuing areas in addition to things like overflow parking areas, heavy customer traffic, traffic management measures, planned police traffic details, loading and deliveries. So, the idea of the plan is to account for all those things, not just typical traffic at intersections, but what are you gonna do with all these people? What are you gonna do if there's just not enough room in your parking lot and you need to find some other options? How are you gonna work with the police to deal with this?
Okay. So, you're thinking we've covered it?
I think we've covered it there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially because, you know, that's kind of hard to write out in the regulation, just that sort of basic fact that if one opens in this town and there's not a lot in the region yet, it'll be busy, and eventually, as time goes on, it'll sort of peter out as it spreads out to the other areas. Um, and a lot of times, that's the same phenomenon you might see with donut shops or, you know, other, other new retail things in the area that are popular.
Okay. So, let me just ask you a question. How many people can stand in line in a hundred feet?
Depends on what COVID standard goes.
Right.
And how much they like each other.
What's the social distancing?
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
So, I just, that hundred foot thing, I'm just a little worried about it in residential area.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's enough.
Valid concern. So, if we, yeah, I know, so do we wanna agree on two hundred and fifty feet? Is that...
I'm, I'm agreeable to two fifty.
Is this two hundred and fifty feet from residences or two hundred and fifty from places of worship that we're talking about?
Um, both.
I feel like I understand the two hundred and fifty from residential. I'm not sure I see the need for the place of worship, um, just because, you know, we're, we're looking at this one church in, in the HI sixty as the example for that, and it may well be the only instance of it in the zones that we're committing. Um, and that is on such a busy road that I don't think that the increase in traffic or activity in their vicinity from a, a new dispensary would even equal the shadow of beach traffic.
Oh, really? I don't, I, I don't know what church.
I'm, I'm just not sure that it would be an appreciable difference in that particular location.
Having a footage requirement?
Right, for the place of worship. But I, I can understand the residential, um, expansion to two hundred and fifty feet.
Anyone else?
Do you really wanna have three different, cuz it's a thousand feet from schools, nursery schools, and dependency centers? I think, I think that's how it was worded.
I think two hundred and fifty feet for both residential and places of worship makes sense. I mean, you're gonna think...
I, I do as well. I, I think the, the sensitivities of, of both uses are similar.
Yeah, agree.
Lynn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
If everybody else is okay with it, I won't make a stand.
Okay, I think it's two fifty. Yes, Ben, did you have a question?
I just, I'm wondering if you can just discuss about the, uh, the use table and, uh, uh, natural operations. But there was discussion about, I don't know, about...
Can you please use the microphone, Ben?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Um, I think there was new information brought up when you were discussing the use table and also, um, six point six, point twenty-seven, point five. Um, or at least many of us were confused originally, I think. And I, it seems that originally, we were, we were talking about one micro cultivator and one retail establishment. Now, I'm not sure if we're talking about one micro cultivator or one retail establishment, um, let alone whether the other uses that were not discussed, uh, are limited to one or not. And I think that, I think that the understanding during the referendum was that because of the way the state law was written, that there would be, allow one micro cultivator and one retailer. And I think, I think that to limit anything, limit anything less than that would, would definitely go against what was voted on in the referendum, because that was something that was, was, um, clearly, uh, enabled by the, by the state legislation.
Uh, to be clear, what I was proposing earlier was that rather than saying there can be one retailer and one cultivator, I was saying perhaps we specify there can be one retailer and one of any of the other uses. So, whether that be a cultivator or...
But the total is two, right? That's it.
Okay, as long as the total was two, but I still, I would still go back to what Keith said, um, that the referendum and the, and the leg, the state, uh, legislation didn't really address the other uses. Um, you know, the delivery service and manufacturer.
Excuse me, the town's referendum or the state statute?
Well, both. I don't, not, neither were really addressed.
Well, the referendum didn't mention any number.
No, that, that, it didn't.
Keith just read the referendum.
No, I understand that, and the referendum strictly said that we wouldn't, we wouldn't...
But I will agree, the townspeople at that time, myself included, based it on the state's statute of the moment.
Yeah, as, as the best we can understand.
What's so confusing is the moment has changed, the state statute's changed, but we haven't changed our thinking.
I just think that to, to go with anything less than one and one would be, would be against the referendum.
That's, so that's what we're saying.
That's what we're doing.
Which is exactly what you're saying, I think.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I...
Yes, Carleen.
Um, Carleen, on a remote. Mr. Sheehan mentioned, um, putting something in the chart, and I'm just wondering if you would consider or if would solve the problem, because a lot of those zones had all N's.
Right.
Okay? But the N's, but the other, some of the other zones have a lot of S's in them.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and, and the dilemma is, what are we gonna do?
Right.
So, I would suggest, and you please think about, putting an asterisk on the column and define underneath that only one of these is allowed in this zone. And then, a double asterisk to the second one, only one of these is allowed in this zone. Maybe that'll solve the problem. You think it might?
Yeah, I, I think it should be stated at, kind of as a bullet, right? Bullet and then a sub-bullet, right? And then, the chart updated accordingly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, it's just a suggestion. We've done charts before with asterisks in them.
Yeah.
Duly noted. Thank you.
This is where you might wanna put it.
Yeah.
It does need clarity. Thank you. Keith, have any other ideas or wanna put it?
I'm just sort of adding up the changes here.
Please.
All right, well, the two major ones are, um, changing seven, six, changing section six, six, twenty-two, excuse me, six, six, twenty-seven, point two, point two.
Yep.
To say that it should be two hundred and fifty feet from any residential use or place of worship.
Agreed.
Agreed, right.
The other change was to amend six, six, twenty-seven, point five to say the commission may only approve a maximum of either one cannabis retailer slash hybrid retailer and one of either cannabis micro cultivator, delivery service, transporter, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, or product packager.
For a total of two.
Yeah, I think two can do, yeah. Within the entire town.
With the entire...
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's matter, Ben?
Since you're, since you're on six point six, point twenty-seven, point five, um, point two, I think that sentence, "The commission may only approve a maximum of either one cannabis retailer, hybrid retailer, and one cannabis multi, micro cultivator in the town," I think that either doesn't belong there. Makes it sound like either, either a retailer or a micro cultivator.
No, you're right, either.
You're absolutely right.
That's why I was confused.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
No, you're absolutely right.
Got that, Keith?
Yeah, and let's see.
Hours?
As far as the use chart?
Hours?
Two, two.
So, Keith, you're gonna go through each one of the zones and just make sure that where you said cannabis establishment, you're making it, it's, it's very clear, right? I'm just gonna use the same statement ten, over and over again. Okay.
Yeah, like for the language of the different zones, like when you look at G C sixty, yeah, often add something in there.
And then, I, I just, I, I've never seen this in a, um, a regulation, the benefit and risk of the cannabis establishments. Why, why would that be in the regulation at all?
Oh, it's, it's not. It's just, uh, part of the report.
That's just part of the report.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, just want to be sure.
Hours? We need to talk about the hours?
Oh, right.
Just before we leave the table.
Yes.
Would it, I understand that the table is not the rule, it's the definition here, but would it make sense to add some clarity to divide the uses into two categories? So, we had use category A, which would include the first, one, two.
Right.
Eight. And then, use category B, which would be the retailer slash hybrid retailer. And then, we say we can allow one from use category A, and we can allow one from use category B.
That's another way to do it.
Yeah.
Everybody wanna slice this sample?
A bullet and then a supple. Yep, exactly.
Whatever, whatever makes sense.
Yeah.
That's another good way to do it.
Yeah.
You're full of ideas tonight, Andy. And everybody want the wordage for the hours to be determined at the special use permit meeting? Depending on the...
Hours of, uh, yeah. Hours of operation shall be stipulated during the permit process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed, Senator?
Yes.
Agreed, Lynn.
Any other?
Anything else, anybody? Comments? Any other comments or...
Carrie, do you have any other input?
Okay. Make a motion to approve, uh, the regulation, uh, as written and amended to a closed public hearing. Oh, closed public hearing, sorry. Make a motion, closed public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have three votes.
Okay, right.
P O C D, comprehensive plan, and the regulations as amended.
Okay, make a motion to approve the P O C D as proposed and written. Second?
Thank you. Chuck and Ryan, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
And then, the next one, make a motion to approve, I didn't catch that, the second one.
Comprehensive plan?
Of comprehensive, make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan as written.
Well, it's conformance to the comprehensive plan.
Oh, conformance to.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And then, make a motion to approve the regulations as written and amended with the items that we discussed, uh, on four items and changes that we discussed in this meeting.
Is that what you have, Keith? Four?
I got one, two, three, four.
Maybe we should read those out?
I think I got five. One was, um, the change to six, six, twenty-seven, five, which was limiting the types of uses. And the second was...
Two fifty feet.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty feet.
The use chart changes. And then, the hours being defined in the permit.
Yeah, the, I just had them as separate things, you know, changing the language in each zone.
Oh, okay.
Add a note about the limit. Number four, I had amending the use chart to talk about the limit.
Okay. I have the use chart combined, but then with the five, with the five recommended stipulations and changes that we discussed, as Keith just outlined.
So, that's the motion.
Second, Chris, Chuck.
Second, Chuck. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, move. Thank you, everybody.
And the effective date of this regulation is September fifth.
Okay, shall we move on?
Let's move on. Thank you.
Okay. P Z two, 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 three, S D, and CAM, Mason's Island Company, Prominent Development, Subdivision and Coastal Area Management Review Applications for an eleven-lot residential re-subdivision. Property located on Schoolhouse and Cormorant Roads, Mystic Assessor's Map, one eight, one block three, lot one, zone R N fifteen.
Thank you, Lynn. So, seated this evening for this public hearing will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Philbrick. Fred Deitman has recused himself and is sitting in the audience, I believe. Lynn Conway, and the alternate will be Gary Delk. Um, I think I've already stipulated the ground rules. There should be a sign-up sheet by the door. Applicant, you have the floor.
Thank you. For the record, I'm actually gonna take this off the stand if that's okay. For the record, my name is Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates. I'm here representing the applicant this evening. We are proposing a, an eleven-lot subdivision that'll be, uh, ten residential lots and one open space lot. It's a, yes, sir?
Is there a way to show that you can see that as well?
Uh, trying to see the best way.
Maybe further from the side there?
Maybe over here? That, if I'm gonna walk around with the microphone, I guess that would be okay. I'll turn it a little bit here. Uh, so, uh, this property is, is bounded by Cormorand... I'll turn it a little bit here. Uh, so, uh, this property is, uh, is bounded by, uh, Cormorant Road on the east. Uh, North Road on the north. Uh, Quarry Road on the west and, uh, Schoolhouse Road, uh, on the south. It's a seventeen acre parcel, as I said, we are proposing. Uh, four point four acres of that property, uh, to be put into, uh, open space. And, uh, the remaining lots are all over one acre in size. Uh, there will be nine lots, uh, that will be accessed from a proposed, uh, new private roadway. That we're calling King Fisher Way. Uh, the, uh. Eastern end of King Fisher Way will, uh, come off of Cormorant Road. And then it terminates, uh, to the, uh, to the south and west on, uh, on Schoolhouse Road. One lot, which is, uh, lot number, uh, six dash fourteen, will actually be, um, accessed, uh, from Schoolhouse Road. Um, in two thousand and four, this property was approved for a twenty-one lot subdivision. Uh, subsequently, uh, the plans were never filed on the land records. And, uh, that, uh, subdivision expired, so the, uh, we're here before you now. Uh, to reduce the number from twenty-one to ten lots. And, um. Hopefully, the, uh, commission will look favorably upon this lesser, um. Intrusive, lesser, lesser of a concentration of housing on this particular site. Um, what we're showing here, the, uh, the sort of like orangey, um, uh. Houses, our, our proposed new houses, we're showing, uh, paved driveways, onsite septic systems. The, uh, the, uh, property will be served, uh, by public water. Uh, the nine homes, uh, that will be accessed from King Fisher Way, are from Aquarian Water. Uh, there's actually a, uh, Connecticut Water actually has, uh, jurisdiction over, over Schoolhouse Road. So we've got two separate water companies that have jurisdiction over this. The, uh, the limit to the, um. To the Aquarian Water, uh, company services is about, right about at this point at King Fisher, at King Fisher Way, so. Uh, Connecticut Water takes jurisdiction over that. We had, uh, we had originally shown, uh, a looped water line. Uh, that, that would, uh, come off of Cormorant Road and loop back to Schoolhouse Road. But neither company, uh, was interested in, uh, sharing the responsibility for that, so. Uh, instead, we'll terminate it, uh, on King Fisher Way. Aquarian Water, uh, will serve these lots and will have just a single service off of, uh, uh, Schoolhouse Road. We did receive, um, approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission, uh, for this project on July seventh. Uh, with the stipulation that an invasive's control plan be, be, um, produced. And, uh, and provided for the town engineer's review. Uh, that would be for the, uh, for the open space area because, uh, a lot of that area, uh, is, is being consumed. Uh, with invasive species, uh, such as, um. You know, bittersweet honeysuckle, fragmides, mugwort, Japanese barberry, all of these types of things that, uh, we typically don't like to see. The, we do have approval, uh, from, uh, Legulate Health Department, uh, for the subdivision review. With the stipulation that individual site plans are required for each lot. As you know, uh, for the subdivision review, all we have to do, uh, for the Health Department is to demonstrate. That, uh, these lots, uh, are capable of, of supporting an onsite septic system, uh, which they are. Uh, and typically a well also, but, uh, as, as I, uh, stated previously, the, um. Uh, water is gonna be a public water supply, so therefore, uh, no wells are required. And we've also received a, um, positive forwarding, uh, from, uh, the Conservation Commission. Uh, a positive forwarding from the, uh, and from the Police Commission as well. Uh, they feel as though these, this is not, um, uh, going to cause any undue, uh, traffic management issues here. I, I do have review comments, uh, from town staff, uh, that I'd like to go over on these plans. Actually, let me just kinda go over what we're, as far as stormwater goes. As part of the original subdivision of, uh, Cormorant Road, uh, there was a, a stormwater basin, uh, that was constructed. Uh, the Mason Island Homestead Homeowners Association has a stormwater basin in this area here. Uh, and there's also, uh, an easement, uh, to discharge, uh, from this development, uh, to that stormwater basement. Uh, the, um, uh, a, a good portion of the pipe, it has already been installed within that, there are, there are two, uh, two drainage manholes. And, and the pipe that extends, um, back toward this division, uh, this subdivision. Uh, so, um, our low point in the road, uh, is, is approximately where, uh, this pipe actually comes in. So we'll be able to tie our drainage system into that, uh, existing, uh, stormwater basin. For the, the high point of the, of the, uh, property is right about where, where you kinda, where you see King Fisher here. Where the K is, there's the high point in water, uh, any stormwater that falls on the road in this area, uh, drains back. Toward, uh, Schoolhouse Road. What we've done here is we've, uh, cross sloped the road, uh, toward the open space. Uh, we have a water quality swale along the side of the road that will, that will collect the water. Um, the town engineer has, uh, some comments on that, which I will go over, um, afterwards. And, uh, as I said, um. These, uh, these single family lots will be, uh, an acre or more in size. And I think it's really apparent if you take a look at this overall aerial photograph that we have. The, um, uh, the lots superimposed in red over the top of this. And, uh, if you look at it in comparison to a lot of the lots that are around it, these are, are substantially larger. And they are obviously substantially larger than what was approved previously in two thousand and four. The, uh, the drainage from the site, uh, is essentially the, um, the roadway. Sort of access, the high point, um, where you've got, uh, you've got water, uh, discharged, uh, flowing in two directions, sort of radially. Uh, from the high point where the road is, uh, we are collecting it in that, in that closed, uh, drainage system and conveying it to the stormwater basin. I did have, uh, comments, uh, from, uh, the town engineer that I'd like to review, uh, and go over, uh, my, my responses to them. Uh, number one, the Connecticut, uh, D E E P general permit for the discharge of stormwater and de-watering wastewater from the construction activities. Are required for sites with five acres or greater of disturbance. Uh, copies of this permit shall be provided to the town prior to construction. This is, uh, actually a registration under a general permit that the, that, uh, the state of Connecticut holds. And, uh, typically, um, sixty days before the start of construction, you, um, register under this general permit. And it's, uh, and what it is, is, uh, we prepare the permit and then typically what we also do is have a peer review where you have a. A second, a licensed professional engineer review it, uh, prior to submitting it, uh, to the state. And, um, uh, that's sort of a, a good system of checks and balances to make sure that, uh, we, we, um, meet, uh, the two thousand and four water quality guidelines. Uh, and also the, uh, the two thousand and two, uh, erosion and sedimentation control guidelines. This, um, you know, stormwater registration, uh, basically addresses erosion, sedimentation control and stormwater quality during the construction process. The applicant will be responsible for providing an erosion and sedimentation control bond to the town of Stonington. In an amount approved by the town engineer, after review of an estimate for all E N S measures. Um, absolutely, we concur with that as well. A vegetative cover, uh, narrative, uh, provide notes for temporary, permanent and winter vegetative coverages to include. Seed type application rates, schedules and time periods for seeding. This is, um, something that's, uh, outlined very specifically in the two thousand and two, um, E N S guidelines that the state has. Um, they've got, uh, probably about forty different seed mixes that they recommend for every different, uh, situation that you might be, um, utilizing. Whether it be a stormwater basin, whether it be, um, a temporary vegetative cover on stockpiles, where, whether it's something you need to germinate quickly. You've got this, uh, great list of, of seed mixes, uh, that we can take from and make sure that we select, uh, the right seed mix. Uh, the archaeological, uh, report recommends a one hundred foot buffer, uh, extending into lot six to avoid any impacts. Uh, to undisturbed graves associated with the cemetery, therefore revise the plan illustrating proposed, uh, improvements accordingly. Uh, what the archaeological report is referring to. Is there is a, um. Mashentucket Pequot Cemetery, uh, right at, just north of the site. And he says lot six, I'm assuming he means, uh, lot eighteen, uh, there, these are all six dash eighteen, six dash nineteen. Currently, we are showing a septic system. Right here, within, within that one hundred foot he, that he recommends. It's, it's certainly not a problem, uh, we're showing it there right now because that's where the test holes were located. We've got plenty of room, uh, on this lot, uh, once, uh, we go to develop this particular property to dig some additional test pits. And, and move that system twenty feet or so, upgrading it to meet that hundred foot buffer.
Excuse me, you are willing to do that, to go to a hundred foot?
Absolutely, yeah, it's, uh, we've got plenty of room on, on the lot to do so, I don't think it impacts the development of the lot whatsoever.
Thank you.
Is there a stone wall or anything around the cemetery?
Um, I don't believe there is, uh, there, there are numerous stone walls throughout the site, which, with Mr., Mr. Bryant, one of Mr. Bryant's comments that I will get into afterwards. But, um, the, uh, you know, the cemetery right now is just basically, you know, there is, there is that buffer. A portion of the open space actually goes, uh, behind lot six eighteen, in fact, we've got, uh, about, uh, seventy-eight feet of it there. Uh, and so this corner of the, of the clearing and, uh, in the proposed septic system does fall within that hundred feet. Provide minimum offset distance from steamer valve to edge of road for the fire hydrant detail. Uh, that's on, I believe, sheet fourteen of the plans, we have, uh, put that dimension on that detail. Sheet seven of sixteen, revise the vertical curve. Uh, station, uh, two plus eighty point two seven to meet the minimum roadway geometric intersection standards. As outlined in chapter two of the Town of Stonington Technical Standards. We made that modification, uh, to the, uh, to the profile in order to meet that. Sheet thirteen of sixteen in the development control plan, uh, narrative replaced, there was a, a leftover note that said Town of Killingly. Uh, but we, uh, we modified that, uh, to Town of Stonington. And additionally, note that the individual responsible for maintenance of E N S controls complete with contact phone number. Uh, that has been added to the plans as well. Provide vertical reference datum and benchmark on plans, uh, that is on the existing condition plan. As far as the vertical datum. Goes, um. This was, is on the North American Datum of nineteen eighty-three, which is Nat eighty-three. Uh, typically though, with benchmarks, uh, and actually putting benchmarks, uh, on the site. Uh, we usually, usually refrain from doing that at this stage of the game because what happens is. Once, once, uh, the lots begin to be cleared and so forth, and that we have a, a game plan as far as which lots will be developed first. Uh, then we can typically go in and set some vertical control at that point, uh, that does not get disturbed and we can put it in areas, uh, that, that aren't disturbed. Uh, drainage comments, says any development resulting in actual disturbance of greater than one acre. Uh, should incorporate best management practices to meet the water quality volume and mitigate for stormwater runoff. Uh, furthermore, type one and type two best management practices shall be designed to mitigate eighty percent of the total suspended solids. And floatables in accordance with the state M S four permit in Connecticut two thousand and four Stormwater Quality Manual, as amended. Um, I believe, uh, our, uh, uh, design, uh, does meet those. As far as best management practices for, um, low impact development. As far as low impact goes, I think reducing this development from twenty-one lots to ten lots, uh, certainly helps in, in making this a much lower impact development. We, we've really limited the amount of, um, catch basins and piping here and wherever possible, we're encouraging sheet flows as well. Uh, he talks about the pre and post, um. Uh, development drainage indicates proposed values exceeding the pre, uh, the, the pre-construction runoff, uh, values. Uh, modify the detention basin, uh, design in accordance with section three one six two of the Technical Standards. What we, we did here, uh, what he's talking about, there are, there are two areas in particular, we've got some very slight increases in peak runoff flows to the open space area. Uh, I'm talking less than one C F S for all design storms. Uh, and we also have, uh, some slight increases, uh, on the north side of the road, uh, to those, uh, to the, the four lots. Here, which would be a lot, um, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. The overall amount of, of drainage, uh, from these lots is slightly greater than, um, pre-construction conditions. However. What we need to, each, each one of these lots individually is going to, uh, be developed, uh, based upon the house, based upon the amount of impervious that goes to the lot. Typically with these lots, we'll, we'll design rain gardens, we'll design landscape berms, um, infiltration practices for individual lots. Um, the, um, my, the, the very, very small amount of, of increases that we're, um, that we're generating right now. Uh, can certainly be mitigated, uh, with the, with the proper procedures as we develop each lot. He also requested the pipe flow analysis, we did a, um, we did a, uh, a drainage report, a drainage study, uh, drainage design. Uh, and your town engineer just asked for the, the individual pipe capacities, uh, which we can, uh, certainly provide for that. Um, and then finally. Uh, item number thirteen, revise the drainage discharge outlet to protect the existing intersection in accordance with section three two one nine and three two one zero. What he's talking about is the, the finally, the final forty feet or so of, of King Fisher Way. What we have, we have a cross slope that drains to a, uh, a parabolic water quality swale here. But the, the last forty feet of the roadway, we don't have the opportunity to catch that. And what your town engineer is suggesting is that we put some sort of a structure, um, at the road here and then discharge, uh, back toward the wetlands. Uh, the problem with that, um, proposal is that there is a, uh, there is an easement, uh, at the. At the intersection of our road and Schoolhouse Road, uh, where there is a, uh, a septic system. And that will be installed on that lot from, from a neighboring property, that easement's already in place, it's been in place. Uh, it was put into place, uh, a number of years ago so that, um. Uh, apparently, one of the neighboring properties is having some issues with their septic system and they don't have any place to put it, so. We are, um, granted, uh, that easement to do that. Uh, I'm certainly willing to work with the town engineer to come up with an, with an alternative solution for that. Uh, because, uh, installation of a pipe and basins there just isn't possible, uh, due to that septic easement. And, and he, uh, finishes his comments by saying, in review of the, the aforementioned application and plans. I recommended, I recommend action be taken by the commission with a stipulation that the engineering comments be accomplished. To the satisfaction and approval of the town engineer prior to construction. Um, and we certainly, um, uh, don't object, uh, to that statement. Now, I, I also have, uh, statements by Mr. Bryant's, uh, regarding, uh. Please clarify the location of the stone enclosure referred to in the archaeological report. That has been noted on the plan, it's, it's right in this corner of, uh, of the open space area. Which is, uh, which is right here. Uh, that has been labeled and, and shown, uh, thusly.
So, um. Does it circle the cemetery?
No, no, the cemetery, the cemetery we're talking about is actually off-site. It's up here. The, uh, the stone enclosure that was, uh, that was, um, brought up in the archaeological report is actually on the property, right about here. the property, right about here. Now, I know I didn't talk too much about the archaeological report, but there was an extensive archaeological report prepared for this project. They did find a lot of like 18th and 19th century artifacts, you know, things like button and pottery shards, musket balls, things of that nature. So the recommendation was to keep that area in conservation and stay away from it, which is what we are doing.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Stone walls to be removed are labeled on the plans. That was another thing Mr. Bryant's brought up. He asked about, "What are we doing with the stone walls that are being removed?" So what we have, we are showing a number of areas where the stone walls have to be removed in order to develop the site. I did put sort of a note on the plan that says, "Stone walls shown to be removed shall be utilized on-site to provide boundary walls or landscaping features."
Excuse me, what sheet are you referring to that has that notation? Am I missing one?
I'm sorry?
What sheet is that?
That is Sheet Number 3, but that's not going to be on your sheet because I just revised it after I got Mr. Bryant's comments.
Ah.
Okay.
I can't see it.
That's why I can't see it.
Yeah. Sorry, my apologies.
No problem.
Yeah, these were done on the 15th after I received the comments, and I discussed this with Mr. Bryant's, but he told me at the time that, just to bring the plans to the meeting and discuss them, because he had already distributed the back.
We understand the process, but it's fully understood.
Okay.
So how many, do you know, do you have a rough estimate of stone wall that you will save and stone walls that will be repurposed?
Well, I'd say probably about half of them are going to be repurposed. They're just, they don't really lay out in a manner that works for the lot layouts. They're really sort of just very randomly throughout the site. I mean, we have some areas where we're trying to utilize them as best as possible, but they really don't make a lot of sense, you know, when looking at the lot layouts. It doesn't work.
So, let me just, if I could just ask you about that process?
Sure.
I don't know. So let's say somebody comes along and they buy Lot 6G, and it has four stone walls. Aren't they going to dictate to you or the builder or the excavator where those stone walls should stay or be rebuilt or something? I mean, how can you make a statement saying?
Well, that's a good question. And I think what's kind of unique about this particular subdivision is that all the homes are going to be built by the same builder. There's a recommended architect that is going to be designing all the homes, a recommended landscape architect that is going to be doing all the landscaping. So when someone comes here and decides what lot they'd like, well, yeah, I'd like my house built on this particular lot. The developer has a vision for this property of what he wants it to be, so it's not going to be where the homeowner comes in and says, "Well, I want to get rid of these walls and I just want to sell them and get rid of them." He's just not going to be able to do that. There's going to be a very strict criteria that this development follows in order to make it continuous, I guess for lack of a better term. They really want these 10 homes to be something where you go through it and they make sense with each other. You're not going to have 10 different styles of housing and so forth there. And so as far as the walls go, I think that's probably the best answer I can give you. Please list maximum gross floor area of each building lot on the plans. That's actually on the zoning table on Sheet 4. I added that maximum gross floor area to the bottom of that table that was previously there. Yeah, and they're all pretty big, anywhere from 80.
Is that also a change from the plans that we have?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any special protections necessary for the cemetery adjacent to the proposed road? So that's a second cemetery, which is right here, this little square right here, about 35 by 35 feet. We're not proposing any special protections. We're not encroaching on that cemetery. The existing roadway, well, it's not exactly a roadway right now, it's a cart path that comes off of Cormorant Road and makes its way across here. That same footprint is going to be used for the roadway. Obviously, it'll be a little more formalized than what's there now, but we don't anticipate that it will have any impact on that cemetery. In fact, there's a, I know a section of stone wall that protects it from any intrusion that we might possibly do with the construction of the road. The application must demonstrate consideration of passive solar energy techniques and passive solar energy operations. Well, we did a shadow plan, I believe it's Sheets 9 and 10, where we showed the house locations in the shadows. So what we tried to do is to orient the long axis of the house to the south to allow for solar access. And another thing too that I think is important is that these lots are big enough and we've got enough spaces between the lots so that if any of these houses wanted to utilize, like say, some sort of passive solar energy, they wouldn't have to worry about the house next door blocking their views or shading it. They'd have the ability to do that. So, you know, based on, you know, that requirement, like I said, we really try to show the long axis of the house in a southerly direction so that we'd be able to take advantage of that.
You won't stipulate into that, into the building instructions?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to do it that way anyway. It's just the way that the lot, the words.
My question is, are you going to request, require solar on the houses?
I don't know if we're going to require it. I can't say for sure if that would be a requirement, but if it's something that the commission would encourage to be considered, then absolutely.
Absolutely.
Flood hazard report that Mr. Bryant's mentioned. Well, what we have here as far as flood hazard goes, we have, the special flood hazard area actually encompasses, I believe, seven of the lots, portions, portions of lots, 13, 15, 16, and then 18 to 22. The special flood hazard, I'm going to flip back here. That's this, these sort of like circle lines here. So of the portions of those lots, I'm talking about lots, these three here, 13, 15, 16, there's a portion of these lots, and then a portion of 18 to 22 as well. The only lot where the potential house would fall within the special flood hazard is Lot 622. The rest of the lots, the special flood hazard is down toward the northern end of those lots, and therefore, no special consideration is required because the homes themselves are not falling within that special flood hazard. Just that single lot, and we have shown it elevated to raise the floor level above that special flood hazard of 11. And as Mr. Bryant's also mentions in his report, and I believe that it was also echoed in the report by the flood plane manager, that compensatory storage is not required because these are tidally influenced flood zones. So I have a copy of my written responses and also the sanitary report, excuse me, the flood hazard report. As I said, "The bulk of this proposed development does not fall within the flood hazard. Portions of lots 13, 15, 16, 18, 22 fall within the AE flood hazard, but only Lot 22 will require fill to raise the proposed structure. The subdivision design is consistent with the need to minimize flood damage. The subdivision proposal has public utilities and facilities such as electrical and water located in construction to minimize flood damage. The subdivision proposal has adequate drainage provided to reduce exposure to flood hazards, and the base flood elevation is shown on the plans as required." So I'd like to hand a copy of this in for the record. I think at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the commission may have.
Would have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I have three questions. Wetlands, so, you know, we said that the engineer, town engineer, said that there was a possibility of water drainage, and you can't really follow the suggestions because there's a right way to contribute to the lot. And you said that's fine, you'll move back to the town engineer and hopefully agree on plan. Will that plan also go to the wetlands because there was a suggestion that you bring anything to the wetlands?
No, well, he said toward the wetlands. We have no activity within 200 feet of the wetlands on this particular project.
So I'm going to sue that town engineer, whatever plan you can help with, it's not going to affect the wetlands, so you don't have to go to the wetlands. Do you want to put something in there saying that, you know, depending upon plan, you might need to go back to the wetlands?
How does that work, Keith? I don't know the technique, how that works.
Well, that's a general rule anyway, where if they do something different within 100 feet of the wetlands, they'd have to go back to the wetlands, commission.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, within 100 feet, for sure. But we are 225 feet, so.
Blasters, no blasters?
I'm sorry?
You're not going to need to blast or anything?
Oh, no.
Okay. And sidewalks, I see you asked for a waiver in sidewalks.
There aren't any sidewalks anywhere on Mason's Island.
I know. Too bad. I mean, this is a new residential neighborhood, a lot of homes.
Yeah, well, I think from my experience doing work on Mason's Island with the amount of traffic bumps and calming in the narrow roads and so forth, I see a lot of people walking along the sides of the roads all the time there.
The need for the sidewalk, there's a lot walking on Mason's Island and by me, and children running. So I just think that's something the commission should think about.
Think about.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Chuck?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. To the town engineer's drainage comments, specifically comment number 11, and I'm referring to the report that we have, and the comment talks about the pre- and post-runoff calculations. I understood as you were saying that the way you want to deal with this is to deal with this after the individual lot plans are developed.
Right.
But I think what the town engineer is saying is that from the standpoint of demonstrating your compliance with the regulations.
Yes.
So that this subdivision can be reviewed and approved.
Right.
You have to demonstrate upfront that you comply with it.
Yeah, and I can, I can.
So I think that's what the town engineer is saying here.
Right, exactly.
So I think you're going to have to revise the calculations to show that in the current situation, you know, you meet the zero net increase requirements as they're stipulated in the regulations.
Sure.
Other, last question is, we talked about special flood hazard area. I think it's defined as elevation 11, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any limo, any limited wave action zones or anything?
No.
There isn't, okay.
No.
That was my only other question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Carrie?
The waivers requested, landscape plan prepared by landscape architect.
Right, because each individual lot is going to be landscaped individually when it's developed. So there's really no sense, and what will happen is the road will be constructed, and you know, other than, you know, possibly maybe putting in a few street trees, each lot itself is going to be, you know, land state. And I can tell you, having worked with the developer on a lot of his projects over the past 10 years, that these will be beautiful homes and beautiful lots.
And the roadway lighting, no roadway?
No. Once again, there's no, and I think, you know, from the perspective of the people that live on Mason's Island, they really like the dark sky, and if we can not put up streetlights and, you know, just have people kind of continue with the way that things have been out there, it'll be a lot more amenable for the people.
Thank you.
Okay.
I need a little clarification on that drainage to the north from the proposed Kingfisher Way. I'm a little confused. Is that just a sway, a reverse sway? I mean, is it a drainage ditch?
Here?
Or is it a pipe?
There's actually a pipe in there. There's a.
It's not drawn in on this plan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm showing it on, it should be on, if you look on Sheet 4 of the plans.
Okay, there it is.
Yep.
And where is that going?
It goes to the stormwater basin that we discussed that was constructed as part of the first phase of this development.
Which is not shown, the basin is not shown.
It's, I can show you the overall, hang on.
Is the basin on a town road?
To the north.
From North Road?
Yeah, the basin is off of North Road.
Okay.
It was built in a previous phase, right?
Correct, correct.
Who owns the basin now?
The Mason Homestead Homeowners Association.
And you have the right to discharge it to it?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it's built over 22 lots, subdivision, so you can figure out from a lot.
Right.
And then last question, well, no, I have a couple more. Open space, who will take on the responsibility of open space?
That was, that's a good question. I think, I think the best, well, entity to take over that open space would be the Homeowners Association. Number one, because there's going to have to be an invasive species management plan there, and then secondly, because there's a septic system in it as well. So I'm not sure if the town wants to take acquisition of that with those encumbrances on it.
Okay.
So would that be deemed, would that be specified, indeed?
Yeah, when the association documents are drawn up, the, all of the specifics about maintaining it and stewardship of it and so forth will be included in that.
Make a stipulation, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'd like to see what's on the sign-up sheet and open the floor to the public. Have any comments in favor, opposed, or general comments? Nauman?
Yeah.
Please.
I've got two questions for the gentleman. The first one is, could you expand on the septic system that is in the open space? What is the purpose of that? And doesn't that kind of violate the concept of an open space to have it undermined with a septic system? What house is being provided with a septic? What house is being provided with a septic service? It seems kind of outside the scope of this whole project that's being developed, so I think it'd be worthwhile knowing what, what's encompassed there, what, what's going on. The second one is, what engineering or regulatory requirement is there for the, the, the new road to connect with Schoolhouse? Schoolhouse is part of a private association, and this would be a second way into the private association that, there's a big gatehouse there, people live there, spend a lot of money for a guy in the gatehouse, this would kind of neutralize all that. So the question is, why is there a need to connect to Schoolhouse as opposed to just go out through the other road? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to, might as well do it individually?
As, as far as the, the septic system in the open space, that was, that area was deeded a long time ago, it, it just happens to be there. I think Mr. Bryant's mentioned in his write-up that there is nothing in the regulations that prevents a septic system from being in the open space, so it's just, you know, something that's there that we have to deal with. As far as the, the roadway going through from Cormorant to Schoolhouse Road, from a, a fire accessibility point, the, you know, the, it certainly makes a lot of sense to, to provide, you know, pass-through traffic in, in the case of emergency vehicles and so forth. The original design that was back in two thousand and four had the road in this configuration as well, so, you know, we essentially mimicked that roadway design, seeing it had been approved before, we just felt that those, it was the easiest route to go since it had been approved previously.
So can I just ask you, before you sit down, and since we're, we're answering the comments, what, is the septic system that's on the open, that's in the open space, is it actively associated with the house?
It's not even, it's not there, there is no, there is no septic system there currently. It's just an easement to construct that septic system when it's needed.
For a house that's already constructed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And in, in the easement, does it say?
I'm not quite sure. I can, I could perhaps speak to the open.
Excuse me, can you talk, use the microphone?
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, what would, what?
Excuse me, hold on, sir. Lynn, were you all done with your question?
No, I, I wanted to just.
So, hold on. Refrain from the audience for a moment, you just can't interject in the middle of someone else's question, to be fair, thank you. So Lynn can do it.
So I just wondered, when, when and if the septic system is built to go along with a home that's outside the eleven lot subdivision, would, and, and that subdivision takes ownership of maintenance of the open space and therefore the septic system, would it, would it stipulate that it has to be pumped out every so many years and that the subdivision pays for it?
No, the subdivision would not pay for it, it would, it would be the responsibility of the homeowner who is constructing the system, and I think with, as with any other septic system, it should be maintained on a regular basis. The, the health department has, in the health code, have recommendations for, for.
Oh, I thought you said that when we talked about the open space and who would take ownership of the open space, and I might have misinterpreted what you said, but I thought you kind of indicated that you felt the best place was for this homeowners association to go ahead and take ownership and maintain it, which I would assume would be anything on it, in it, below it?
No, I, and I mean, if I wasn't clear, I apologize, it would be for basically the maintenance of, of the open space itself, invasive management, mowing, anything of that nature.
Surface only.
Pardon me?
Surface only.
Correct.
It's an easement, actually, it's a.
So it must say.
It is pretty clear, there's an easement that gives some third party the right to build a septic system in there. So, so then under that easement, that party that builds it is responsible for it in the future.
Okay.
So, you know, it, the demarcation is pretty clear.
Right.
The, the open space maintenance activities would be X, the subsurface leaching facility maintenance activities would belong to that party who owned the maintenance, who owned the easement.
That's correct.
So it's, it's on the land records and probably pretty.
Yeah, it's on the land, and, and there are.
It's a good question.
And there are actually, there are actually two separate easements there. One of them, one of them is for the system itself, and the other one is a temporary easement to construct it, because they assume that, you know, the footprint for the easement, the, the footprint for the, for, you know, building that system is going to be larger than the system itself.
Okay.
So there's a temporary easement in place for access to it.
Okay, so that's a whole separate matter.
Correct.
Then the other follow-up question to the public comment, having to do with the road going into a private community, did you go back, since the twenty-two lot subdivision expired and wasn't registered, did you go back to whatever that private community government is and say, okay, we're, we're doing this just as we had been agreed X number of years ago?
No, I, we did not, we did not.
So is your thought process, it would just be an open road?
Yeah, well, it's going to be, it's going to be owned and maintained, it's a private road, that'll be, that will be utilized and maintained by the homeowners association, that'll be part of this development.
But the, okay.
I mean, I think, you know, everyone has the right to access the roads throughout the island, it's, you know, I, I mean, there's a separate homeowners association on Cormorant Road, and that's going to terminate in where, where King Fisher Way is going to start, there's, there's a homeowners association there, that's not part of this association, and I don't know how many different associations there are on the island, but I'm, I'm sure there are a number of them.
I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just a, just a clarification, since the roads are owned by the individual homeowners association.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is it established anywhere that there are mutual rights on the part of all homeowners across all the roads?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because I mean, you aren't connecting to the roads, and it's, it's understood that's the case.
I, I would think so.
I've driven up there myself.
I, I, because, you know, I, you know, if, if every road here, or every dozen houses or twenty houses has a separate homeowners association, they, they certainly have to traverse over other roads to get to their homes.
Right.
So maybe if it's not written somewhere, it's, it's just an assumed right to be able to get to your property?
But, you know, and again, I don't want to make any assumptions here, but there is a gatehouse as part of a community within Mason's Island.
Correct.
And that gatehouse supposedly monitors and may limit access to a private road.
Right.
So my understanding from the comment is that now, that's, and that's the only way, that's the only road with the gatehouse to get into that part of that community.
Correct.
So with this subdivision, there's going to be another house, or another road to access, to kind of bypass the gatehouse, so to say.
Actually, no, you have to, you actually have to go through the gatehouse to, to get there.
To get to King Fisher?
Okay.
Yes, yeah, you have to.
That wasn't clear.
The next, the next road after that is Cormorant, after the gatehouse, you, you right, you go to the, right on Cormorant, and then, and then Schoolhouse is the, is the next one after that. So you do have to actually go through the gatehouse to, to get there.
Well, I hope you have an agreement then.
Yeah. Well, I know, you know, I, I don't live there, but, you know, I go there to working on projects, and I just tell the gentleman at the gatehouse, I'm, I'm going to Schoolhouse Road to dig some test pits, he says, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I, you know, okay.
Does the town follow the rules?
I don't know.
No.
Is that a town following rules?
No.
No.
All private. Thank you.
Do you want to follow up, Mr. Newman? Come on up to my.
So as far as I understand it, if this is approved, as is with the request for the septic, then a septic system will be built there for a house that is unidentified, may or may not exist, as far as we know, on a piece of property that is green space, right? And as far as I can tell, I can't see a house on that property that is supposed to be the green space that would normally be considered the house for the septic system. So conceivably, we're talking about piping waste around Mason's Island to get to the septic system. So far, we haven't really had any answers, as far as I can tell, on the house, where it is, how the sewage is going to go to this system, and if this is approved as requested, it's just, there's an approval right for that system. So I think it's really incumbent on this committee to understand what is being requested with respect to that system.
Yeah, I think the, I have a different understanding. Mr. Engineer, I can't remember your name, could you clarify that? Is the house existing already?
Yes.
Can, please step up.
Could you point out the, the house's location?
I, I, I don't know exactly where that house is, could, yes, yes.
And who are you?
I'm Peter Giordano, I own Prominent Development, who will be building all the homes in this subdivision. There is a easement right now for that septic system that is further down, the house location is further down on Schoolhouse Road, quite a bit down, you know, direction. There will be a house built there eventually, it will be a high-pressure pumping system for, from that house that will go travel all the way up the road.
Underneath, underneath Schoolhouse.
Underneath the Schoolhouse Road, to that location. And it's all been approved, wetlands, everything's been approved for that lot. Currently, that is not built at this point.
And Ledgely, Ledgely has reviewed that system.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the authority, to answer your question, the authority for septic systems is not, is not this commission, the authority for septic systems is Ledgely, the health district, so they review and approve these things. So this, this was all reviewed and approved in advance, it could happen tomorrow under these lands that are already, already approved.
That's correct.
All the easements exist to, to build this tomorrow, so.
Whether they have a subdivision or not.
Right.
Correct.
That's correct.
Totally independent.
That's correct.
So, and it's not, it's not so peculiar, sir.
I do not know the property owner, it is not being built currently, all I know that there's an easement, and it's been approved by Ledgely in, that a septic system could go there, the final design will be based upon the actual building of the house.
The thing that makes it unusual, and I don't disagree with you, is that now the subdivision is approved, and you overlay the subdivision on this, and it is kind of a peculiar thing, that it ends up being an open space. So, and, you know, that part of it, that part of it, you know, is just an emerging issue, but, but it wasn't designed that way to begin with, it, it sort of happened, you know, because the two activities are overlaid on one another.
That's correct.
That's, that's the way this took place, at least based on my understanding of the fact.
Thank you for the clarification.
The plans say that the easement is in favor of Shonda Shekhar, Mike, Mike, I'm not sure where exactly their property is, but that they're the ones who the easement's in favor of.
The property, just so people understand, is twenty-eight Schoolhouse, it's probably about a thousand feet of sewage pumping around the island.
Thank you. Moving along, Keith Gove?
Hello, I'm representing the Mashen Techetra, and I want clarification on what you said, McBride said about the distances, I was looking for, oh, what clarification on what Kevin McBride said about the distances from the cemetery, and does the project have a, keep forgetting the word, but, an unanticipated discovery plan, right, in case more, you know, ancestors are found there, so, we would like something in place that the developer recognizes that he's tearing up bones, and he stops, and he calls people. We have one that we can give to developer, and he just has to fill it in. We'd like that put into the permit if issued.
Thank you, it's a very relevant point.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy Marco?
Hi, I'm Taffy, I live at twenty-three Skiff Lane, so I'm within the Mason's Island Fire District, and I used to serve as the president of the homeowners association, and I, I thought the presentation was great, but I have a couple of questions. I don't know if I do it by piecemeal, because probably there's five questions, one of them, I just was curious, are the utilities underground for this new section?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes. Also, the question is, how many lots are going to be in the Mason's Island Fire District versus outside the Mason's Island Fire District?
Good question.
When you were talking about the association, I think there were one, I don't recall, Rufus did a nice presentation at our annual meeting, and I don't recall how many lots were going to be of this thing in the Mason's Island Fire District versus the other association, or Mason's Island property owners. And both of them have, at least we have a tax structure that takes care of plowing our roads and doing all kinds of things, I'm not really sure about the other association, I, I'm ignorant about that, but if you have this contiguous road that's going to go from one to the other, would they stop plowing at a certain spot? I mean, I'm just kind of curious. Same thing with the Fire District, we have Hoxey that we have contracted, I'm not sure if the other one's Hoxey or not, so that's the kind of thing. The other question was, in the presentation, they were talking about the High Point on King Fisher, and one part of it drained to the basin, and then the conversation went, the other part drains to Schoolhouse, and we'll talk about it later, but I didn't, I must have ignored where the other part is on going to Schoolhouse, and I think that some of the people that knew I was coming tonight would like to know, where is it draining on Schoolhouse, because that's within the Mason's Island Fire District.
Okay, we'll find out, we'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Engineer?
Yes, I can answer that.
Refresh my memory, your name, please.
Norm Tebow.
Norm, thank you.
Not a problem.
Embarrassed, I see, Mr. Engineers.
Yes, underground utilities, yes, obviously you answered that question. The number of lots in the Mason's Island Fire District, I, I don't know the answer to that, you know, I don't know if any of the other gentlemen that are here with me this evening know the answer to that, but off the top of my head, I don't know. Regarding the High Point on King Fisher and the drainage, I, I did talk about it, but I'll, I'll clarify.
Okay, and why now that it's going to Schoolhouse?
Yeah, so, the end, so we've got a High Point right here, and so this, this portion of the roadway drains back toward, towards Schoolhouse Road. What we've done is we've cross-sloped the road, so even though it's coming here, it drains to a, it's draining to this swale on side of the road, and the, the, the only question by the town engineer is, you know, what happens to this last, like forty feet of the road or so, because you've got about forty feet of it that we can't capture. So we, we've got the, we've got about forty feet of pavement that's draining out onto Schoolhouse Road, and that, that I haven't accounted for, and that's something that the, the town engineer suggested possibly, you know, putting in some sort of a stormwater collection system at the road here, and then piping it into the open space. The problem with that is that the pipe would have to go through the septic easement, and health code does not allow that, so that's kind of the conundrum that we have right now. You know, I think, you know, the forty feet of pavement or so that's draining out, I think is very, very inconsequential, I am going to discuss it with the town engineer to see whether potential solutions he may have, I mean, since it is such a small area here, it's very possible that we could put a couple of dry wells there and, and infiltrate that, that little bit of water to keep it from getting to the road, but that's a, that's an item that he and I need to discuss.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, because I know it's two.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, because I know it's two kind of spaces, two landings, and I have a rougher discussion with the property owners and I do hope that happens anyway.
I, I don't believe it will. I don't believe it will.
And lastly, I can't quite read the signature, but the person from Three Mallard Road. You have to state your name.
It's me.
Okay.
I'm Amy Estabrock.
Amy.
And I'm a relatively new resident, uh, on Mason's Island. Uh, I've never attended a planning and zoning meeting before.
Welcome.
So forgive my.
You're doing a very good job.
Forgive my ignorance, and I gotta say, it's been very enlightening and wonderful to learn, and that's what I came here for tonight, was to learn what's going on, because it's all been sort of masked in secrecy. Um, I don't know if what I had prepared to say tonight is appropriate for the occasion, because what I'm, you know, I mean, what I've learned tonight is, is, is very helpful to, you know, get down to the nuts and bolts of, of what the physical impact could be on this land. I'm more, um, concerned, um, with the, the spatial, the, the beautification, you know, the beauty being destroyed. Um, so should I say this or should I not? I don't.
It's up to you.
I mean, does it, does it, you know, I don't know if it has any bearing, I don't know.
It's a public hearing, you can say what's on your mind.
All right, I'll say what's on my mind, and that's why I came, because I thought if, you know, one of the reasons, because if I don't speak up when there's a chance, and I've never done this before.
My only request is to use the microphone a little bit more closely.
Uh, this parcel of land is contiguous to the home I purchased almost two years ago. I'd moved to Mason's Island two years prior to that to see if it would be a place I'd like to settle and begin a new life. I ultimately chose to purchase my home here for four important reasons. The natural beauty, the safety, privacy, and the close caring community. The people who lived on this island for a number of years, who have lived on this island for a number of years, share a common appreciation for and deeply value the undeveloped nature of the island. The land under scrutiny is a deciduous forest chock full of wildlife adjacent to my backyard. This undeveloped space provides peace and quiet, not only for me, but for all the residents of the north end of the island. It offers up only the soothing sounds of nature rustling leaves, bird song. Uh, it provides nighttime darkness, a home for deer, fox, squirrels, a vast number of bird species, as well as a lovely grassy trail for walking. The dog, dogs particularly appreciate this feature. As a newly single senior citizen, it was important to me to feel safe living here. Uh, the limited density and trail allows residents to, the ability to walk the island without feeling threatened by traffic. The proposed development will create a new traffic route that eliminates this trail. In the four years I've been living here, the sounds of construction have gradually increased to the point where for the last year at least, it is now a daily occurrence. This noise of backing up beeping trucks, blasting, boulders dropping, backhoes digging has become incessant. If this proposed development moves forward, the community will be sus- suspected, uh, to this horrid din for years to come. Sadly, the vast amount of development that has occurred over the island in the last few years has already begun to negatively impact the peaceful, safe feeling of the place. Further development will simply destroy the zeitgeist of Mason's Island's homeowner community, homeowners community. Um, to Rufus Allen, I'd like to say, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, this land was given to you, it wasn't earned. This gift thus came, came with both the responsibility to care for it and the community to which it's a part of, not just for today, but for its future. With it, you were also given the power to affect positive or negative change, to not just the land, but to the lives of each and every person, animal and bird that resides in this community. And not to just the current residents living on Schoolhouse Road, but every future resident that will be directly, directly affected by your choice. When considering how to manage this asset, I implore you to consider or reconsider donating this seventeen acre parcel to MAPOA, which is Mason's Island Property Owners Association, as protected land to ensure the well-being of both the island itself, its residents, human and animal, in perpetuity. You have been empowered with a choice. Your legacy can be that of a hero, a protector of this land and this community, or the antithesis of that. Which legacy will you choose? To the Planning and Zoning Council, um, I implore you to exercise whatever power you may, may have control to prohibit this development from happening. The quality of life currently provided to the residents of Mason's Island will be permanently destroyed if this development is to occur. Developing this land will displace wildlife, create noise pollution from people, their lawn equipment, their cars, create light pollution adversely affecting both humans and the wildlife that may remain, increase traffic on the roads and decrease safety, increase demand of the water supply, increase waste and litter. Mostly, it will hurt the integrity of what makes this island so special. And that's all I have to say, and forgive me if it's not, it's how I feel.
Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any final rebuttal, Norm?
No, um, I mean, I, I mean, I certainly appreciate the concerns. Um, I think, I think, um, you know, as, as developers, they've, they've really taken a lot of things into consideration by reducing the number of lots. And, um, and I'm sure I don't have to remind this commission that subdivisions are considered an as of right use, and if we do meet these subdivision and zoning regulations, um, you know, that, that is the criteria in which you have to consider this application, so, um, uh, I think by putting nearly four and a half acres into open space and, and limiting the, the amount of disturbances on these rather large lots, um, we'll be able to preserve a, a, a lot of the, um, elements of the site that people are concerned about possibly losing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, staff report?
There's a gentleman in the audience.
Oh.
The gentleman in the rear, if you could just come up and state your name.
I can just go ahead. Um, can I?
That's okay, just state your name, you can state your name on the microphone and afterward.
My name's Rufus Allen, Mason's Island Company. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I wanted to mention a couple of things to the commission. We set aside, and irrespective of the planning and zoning regulations, in other words, we weren't required to do this as part of subdivision. We set aside forty seven acres in the center of the island, which will be privately protected by the nature conservancy. It's because I spent my whole life, eighty years on Mason's Island, and this morning we had seven deer robbing through our yard. And, you know, when I, when I hear people who have a minimum size, a substandard sized lot worried about this proposal, I get a little upset. You know, we did get the approval for the twenty month lots. I probably wouldn't have come in with ten lots, but I know the builder is, has a very good reputation. He's built a lot of good houses on Cormorant Road. And when he, when I was approached that he wanted to buy it or work with the buyers, and we're only going to put in ten lots, I thought, what better could we have on Mason's Island with acre lots? Whereas some of the lots that we have from the old days are only ten thousand square feet. So I, I think, you know, to, to criticize this and worry about the birds and the bees, all you have to do is come down and walk the Black Duck Road and you got forty seven acres of wetlands, inland wetlands, marsh, forest, and there, as I said, lots of beetles running around. And I, I just agree, you know, from when my grandfather started this, that was back in the old days, a lot on a land development, some of the lots were less than ten thousand square feet. And he said, what are those brothers? And said, no, we're going to make larger and larger and larger. And these are far larger lots than what the town requires. And, and I just, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff?
Well, as, as Mr. Tebow pointed out, subdivisions are an as of right exercise by state law. Where basically if someone proposes a subdivision and it meets the regulations, both the zoning and subdivision regulations, uh, it needs to be approved. That said, there are a lot, a lot of details in the subdivision regulations, especially about progress and things to be shown on the plan. You know, a lot of it comes back to the town engineer's comments. I think the bottom line is, you know, the town engineer said that he needed more information to determine whether the basin can handle runoff and, you know, whether there'll be nega- negative impacts to the property down the slope to the north on Old North Road. The two thousand and four plan included a swale to the north of the houses to channel stormwater to the east, to the planned basin, where the plan now doesn't have the swale, but it has a buffer of existing vegetation. So it's sort of a trade off, if you build a swale there, you're cutting down the trees to, uh, to build a swale. And whether that's needed is something that, uh, the town engineer can review when he looks at the revised plans. This is also a CAM application, costal area management. Um, so this was referred to DEP for their comment, um, which they really didn't have anything negative to say about it. Um, as was mentioned, uh, only one of the houses will be actually built in the flood plain. So the plans show it being elevated, uh, to be out of the, to be above the base flood elevation. And the plan is for them to request a, uh, little letter of map amendment to FEMA to remove that property from the, uh, from the flood district once that's done. Uh, we talked about the archaeological study and where the resources are, which seem to be in the open space. Yeah, the applicants have talked about increasing that buffer from the burial ground in Old North Road to a hundred feet, as was recommended in that plan. And we have some draft recommended stipulations for this if the commission approves it, which, um, I think I'll go through now, just to get those out in the open here. Uh, number one's that the final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number two, final plan shall include new street address and assessors lot numbers as assigned by the town. Uh, number three is to provide the AutoCAD drawing of the lots or to provide a fee in lieu of that drawing. Uh, number four is that the open space transfer and drainage easement shall be recorded with the final plans. Number five is, uh, language about installing boundary markers for the lots. And number six, um, posting the erosion and sedimentation control bond.
I'd like to add two more if we can, with the board's concurrence. I appreciated the Mashin-Tucker representative with the plan for digging surprises.
Yeah, the unanticipated discovery.
Unanticipated.
Yep.
I think that should be included.
Agreed.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then, um, I'd like in writing the keeping a hundred feet from the burial ground, any kind of construction?
Agreed.
Is that amenable?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it was more than keeping away from it, I think, my understanding was that the boundary of the open space parcel would be moved down, maybe I misunderstood that.
I thought it was the septic system was seventy three feet away from the burial ground, a lot.
They were going to move it.
They wanted a buffer around the cemetery.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Let's see.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, maybe we can get clarification from them with, were we talking about moving the boundary of the open space parcel or just moving the septic system?
I can, I can clarify that, Norm Tebow, for the record. Uh, that would just be moving the septic system, not, not the boundary of the open space.
A lot, uh.
Six nineteen?
Six eighteen?
Eighteen.
Yes, eighteen, thank you. That was it for my.
So, so I mean, my recommendation was, you know, we can go through all this, but that, you know, to ultimately continue the hearing, to, to give them a chance to address some of those, uh, drainage issues.
Absolutely, with the, yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I would, would do people think about sidewalks? I think he requested a waiver with sidewalks, am I?
Think about sidewalks for the continuation of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering, could we do, I remember Chuck on one of the previous, probably we, we made a simple for an easement for a sidewalk to be built, would they agree to that? As opposed to having them build one? We saw, I remember we did that on another project, does it compromise? No, no worries, I just.
It's a private road, so it's not a matter of an easement, they have to build, actually build them, right? So the town's never going to come in and build them. Whereas what, that's what happened, uh, you know.
I just wondered if we force one, then we have to be, you know, something we need to do.
We have to start somewhere, I just think it's, it's a discussion point that we maybe want to take up either now or during the continuation.
Continue with our other items we'll be talking about next meeting, next time we open them.
So are we talking about tabling this to give them a chance to work with the town engineer on the, on the drainage items, or are we talking about a conditional approval?
To keep it open.
Keep it open.
Please.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Please.
Make a motion to, uh, keep this, uh, hearing open until, uh, the next scheduled session?
Up to Keith's discretion, yeah.
And is the next, is that enough time, September sixth, the next meeting?
Yes.
Until September sixth.
Okay. So here, thank you, uh, mind, do you hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
Well, the, the public hearing's still open, but.
Oh, so make a motion.
Tonight's meeting.
I take that back, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.